I'd like to call this meeting of the Northwest Local School District Board of Education to order. Amy, if you would please call a roll.
Mr. Unger.
Here.
Mr. Harlow.
Here.
Mrs. Detschel, here.
Mr. Detschel.
Here.
Mr. Heather. I'd ask that you all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is approval of minutes. Mr. Bowling?
Yes, we would like to get an approval for the regular meeting on October 12, 2015. The treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. The October 12 minutes are approved, 5 to 0. Special recognition.
Yes, we were going to recognize two of Colrain High School National Merit Scholarship committed scholars. Neither one were able to make it tonight, but we'll put the offer out to them.
They're studying.
Yeah.
Did you guys know their names, though?
Paletta.
Paletta.
Names for both?
Yes.
We have plaques also.
Okay.
It is Ryan Lawson and Miranda Roverson.
Okay. Thank you.
These are the plaques for them, and Paletta will get them to those fine students.
Our next item is a legislative update by a horse. Mr. Harlow.
Excuse me, I do not have a report, and I wouldn't even if...
Thank you for sparing us, Mr. Harlow, and we'll move on to the next item, which is a student achievement liaison report.
Thanks, Dan. Tonight, as you can see, we have a group of students here. The Butler Tech Digital Media Arts Instructor, Rick Aragon, will be here giving a brief overview of the Digital Media Arts Program. Northwest students will present their involvement with BPA, plans for Northwest News Channel, learning photography, recording a breast cancer awareness speech, and their experiences volunteering with Waycross TV.
All right. Thank you for having us this evening. Thank you. Hello, my name is Rick Aragon. I am the Digital Media Arts Instructor over at Northwest High School. Our program contains five courses: multimedia web production, video production, audio broadcasting, digital broadcasting, and the business of arts and communications. The mission of Butler Tech is to develop lifelong learners with marketable skills and knowledge by providing exceptional educational experiences and workforce services. As many of our students can tell you, they're here today to tell you, our classroom is not the typical classroom. Our assignments, projects, and presentations are no longer completed using paper and pencil, but we use Google Classroom. Our state-of-the-art IMAC computer lab allows students to express their creativity with photography, video production, audio production, graphic design, and other projects. I can say that I'm truly amazed by the amount of technology that we have available for our students, the tremendous amount of support from the Northwest community, and the feeling of inspiration when students discover how to express their creativity in my classroom. This year, I've challenged my multimedia web production course to brainstorm ideas for a Northwest student website. I've challenged my junior program to transform my office into a recording art studio. And I've also challenged my senior class to become the first digital media arts class to produce a Northwest news channel. The Digital Media Arts Program is what led me into an exciting career in the television industry, and my goal is to spark a fire in the next generation of young filmmakers, artists, and engineers. I've brought along a few of my students here this evening who have demonstrated leadership and a passion to learn in the classroom. They are here to share some exciting news about what is happening in our program. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tiffany Whalen, and I'm a representative for the senior class. Our program will be participating in the Career and Technical Student Organization Business Professionals of America for the 2015-2016 school year. On November 19, myself and a group of other BPA representatives will be taking a trip to Columbus, Ohio for the Fall Leadership Conference. In January of 2016, all digital media arts students will prepare and compete regionally in the BPA competitions. Our digital media class will be competing in topics such as broadcast news production, video production, graphic design, web design, photography, and digital media production. Our top qualifiers for each competition will compete at the State Leadership Conference in Columbus, Ohio. The two top, the top two finalists from the State Leadership Conference will move on to compete in the National Leadership Conference in Boston, Massachusetts in May of 2016. I'm looking forward to participating in BPA this year and earning torch awards for community service projects. Thank you.
How's everyone doing this evening? My name is Justin Coleman. I'm also a senior representative for the Digital Media Arts Program. I'm excited to announce that our senior class will be producing the very first Northwest News Channel. Our newscast will be shot and edited using our HD tracaster systems. We will be reporting events, about events happening around the Northwest Local School District and community. With the help of Waycross TV, we will be broadcasting online and on TV once a week. We think that informing residents of positive news in our area will go a long way in building a better community for all of us. We plan to launch our Northwest News Channel by the winter of 2015. Please stay, uh, please stay tuned, and thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dorinda Reddick. I am in the Multimedia Web Production Course. In this class, we'll learn how to design websites, shoot photography, make movie trailers, and record podcasts. This year, I have the opportunity to record and edit a breast cancer awareness speech for the Northwest Boys varsity soccer team. We recorded players speaking about breast cancer awareness and then edited together so that it can be broadcast for September 19 home soccer game. I have done producing this project as I had never recorded audio before, and it was challenging to focus on the audio levels while the script was being spoken. I'm glad I was able to be a part of such a positive and emotional message. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kristen Jacklard, and I am a sophomore, and I'm also in the Multimedia Web Production Class. In our class, we are required to obtain 15 hours of community service, and I have achieved most of those hours by working with Waycross TV. Mr. Aragon introduced me to Waycross in the spring of last year. During my first experience with Waycross, I assisted in setting up production equipment and was a camera operator for a Northwest baseball game. Since then, I've had the opportunity to go inside the production truck to learn how a Waycross production was recorded. So far, I have participated in three high school games, and I am looking forward to recording the more Northwest basketball games this season. Thank you.
I have a question for the seniors. What are your plans once you graduate?
I actually want to be in there when I graduate, but I don't know that this will be like my backup plan.
My plan after school is I'm actually in the middle of time to pursue my master's degree.
Great. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. In the house.
Thank you for a very nice presentation. Thank you very much. And our next item is a Butler Tech update. Mr. Detschel?
Yeah, Dan, just two quick things. Just wanted to report that last Tuesday, Steve Shabbat was here, our representative from the area over at the Career Center at Colrain, to check out the classes that we have going through there through Butler Tech. And Todd was there, and Paletta was there, and he seemed to be very impressed with, with our classes that we have there. And it was, it was set up, there was a student that had, I guess, had contacted his representatives, and, you know, he, he wanted to come over and check it out, and it was, it went very well. And then the, the only other thing that we have is the Board of Education at Butler Tech, we have contracted with K-12 to do our superintendent's search. Since our superintendent at Butler Tech, Bill Miller, is retiring at the end of the year.
And if I could take a moment, I saw Kristin Abadakar walk in. She was our Butler Tech representative, so put a face with a name. She helped organize a lot of what's going on.
I apologize for coming in right in the middle of the Butler Tech presentation here. So I am the Butler Tech supervisor at my class in Colrain. I've been at Butler Tech for almost seven years now, and I was actually a teacher in the world prior to the end of the year.
So she's helping recruit to fill our classes, to get the numbers where they need to be, some new programs, possibilities, doing surveys with the students, so she's really been a refreshing change from last year.
I know we also, I think Dan and Jim and I and Todd, had the opportunity to go to the all boards meeting. Was that two weeks?
That was two weeks.
Two weeks ago.
Thirteen days ago.
And that was very interesting because the kid, first of all, the culinary, they're awesome, and they...
I'd say the food was pretty good.
The food was excellent, and they, the kids do everything, so they served everyone. And I believe the head chef was from, was it Colrain?
From Colrain.
From Colrain.
Yeah.
And then the other thing that was really interesting is this year, they had representative from each of the groups...
The CTSOs, the student groups.
The student groups. And so they got up and they explained, you know, what each of the groups were. So they always do such a nice job at the all boards meeting, so that was nice.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Our next item is a special report. Mr. Bowling, tell us about it.
Yes, Jenny Blust is going to introduce Mrs. Rio for our principal data report.
There we go. Hi, tonight, we'd like to introduce Lori Reilly. She is the principal of Weigle Elementary, which is a 3-5 school right next door, and she is going to present her building goals, some data, as well as the response to the data that they have at Weigle right now. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for having me here tonight. Like she said, I want to start with our building goals for the year. We set four different building goals that I'm going to kind of quickly run through, but if you have any questions, feel free to stop me before I get into our data piece. Our first goal revolves around MAP and our growth projections for the year and the number of students meeting those growth projections. So right here, you can see our third grade math and third grade reading. The number in black is our goal for this year, and the number in red is where we were last year. To kind of put it in perspective, typically, schools and districts have about 50% to 60% of their students meeting their growth projection. So as you see, as we kind of click through, there we go. We weren't far off last year. We had some 50s, we had some 60s, and there were a few 40s, but we don't want to be on the low end of that. We want to be on the high end, if not even higher. I don't feel like there's anything average about Weigle, about the students and the staff, and I certainly don't want our numbers to reflect anything average either. So we have some increase in our growth projections, which we hope will kind of push our students a little further and get them to grow a little bit more, closing some of those achievement gaps that we have. Okay, speaking of achievement gaps, we specifically want to look at our students with disabilities. That has always been an area at Weigle that we have been focusing on the past few years, and we've made great gains, and we're going to continue to focus on that. So we set a goal for math and for reading, grades three through five. Last year, in terms of math, only 54% of our students met their growth projection, and these are students with disabilities. Our goal this year is 70. That is a lofty goal. That is an intentional lofty goal. We will not close that achievement gap for those students if we continue to have low expectations and only bump them up little by little. So we're really hooked, we're shooting for the 70% in both, I have a little time here, in both reading and in the math. Our next goal is office referrals. I believe strongly that if a student's sitting in my office waiting to talk to me, they're not in the classroom, they're not learning, they're not going to grow. So we have been working on reducing our number of office referrals for quite a few years. In 2013-14, we had 406 referrals. Our goal for next school year is to have 263 or less. Like I said, we have been working on that, and in 2014-15, last year, we were able to bump that all the way down to 309. So I think if we continue doing some of the strategies that we're doing, meeting students' needs in different ways, I believe we'll easily be able to accomplish that goal.
All right. What is the source of those referrals?
They range from disruption in class, disrespect.
Discipline items?
Yes, discipline items, absolutely. And then we wanted to also look at the number of suspensions, specifically with our students with disabilities, to make sure that we are doing everything we can to meet their needs educationally, keeping them in the classroom. We want to decrease that number by 25%. So in 2014-15, we had 34 incidents of suspension in which the student was labeled as a student with a disability. We want to get that down to less than 26. So those are our four goals that we are working on throughout the school year. Now I want to talk to you about... Hold on. We're getting that. There we go. Our third grade language arts data. I typically like to come to these meetings, and I get all excited about some great thing that we are doing in the building. But today, I'm here to talk about our third grade language arts data, which I'll be right up front, it is not good. And we know that it's not good. And I believe we have two options. We can take these numbers and kind of bury them in our paperwork and not really own the data, or we can put it out there and own it and do something about it. So what better way to throw it out there than to do it right here? So our third grade language arts data, we have been struggling, as you can see, in the past two, past few years. Last year, we had 67.2% of our students meeting that OAA benchmark requirement. Not acceptable. Not acceptable. So, some other data we want to talk about in terms of our third grade language arts. So that was OAA data. This is MAP data. Last year, our third graders came into third grade with a MAP score of 185.8, which the national mean score was 189.9. So they were a little bit below the national mean. And this spring, they left at 195.7. The national mean was 199.2. So we were able to move them, but if you kind of do the math, they're really, we really weren't closing that gap at all. We moved them about what was expected. We have high hopes this year for a variety of reasons. First and foremost, our second graders coming in, we took a lot of time and looked at their data to make sure that we were designing programs and strategies that would fit their needs. And our second graders left Struble last year at a 191.7. You can see they were far above the national norm. And when they got to us, they scored at a 187.4. It's very typical that they fall from spring to fall, and one thing also to note is that in second grade, they take the MPG test, which is read to them. And when they get to Weigle, they take the MAP test, which is not read. So that does impact some of their scores when they first come into our building. But as you can see, they're right there along still with the national mean score. So, overall growth. In 13 and 14, we had 62% of our students meeting that growth projection. Last year, only 49% of our students met that growth projection. Again, not the best-looking data. So...
Lori, what's the reason for that?
I think there could be a variety of reasons. I look forward to the day when we pass the levy and we get all of K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5 together. I think it's hard for kids to transition from second to third. I think it's hard for teachers to connect with those second grade teachers, and everyone to be on the same page when you're in two separate buildings. I think the clientele that we have continues to change, and I'm not sure that we are changing with our clientele. And I think that's, that's something that, when I talk about some of the strategies that we're doing, that we really need to make sure that we are focusing on. It's, it's not the same kid that came through Weigle 10 years ago. So when we did some summer work, we did a lot of summer work. These are some of the things that my BLS and I did. We analyzed data from the building, not just of the students, but also of teachers. Were there teachers that were getting the job done, and if so, what were they doing? We also, you know, what were some of the strengths of the teachers in general, and what were some of the weaknesses? We analyzed that second grade data, like I said. We saw some great things in that second grade data. From that second grade data, we saw that there were many students coming to us at a very, very high level. And if we wanted them to grow, we needed to do something a little bit different. So we were able to create class rosters that allowed for greater differentiation. So we have classrooms that, instead of having three different levels of kids, a low, middle, and a high, they have maybe middle and high kids, where those teachers can really take them and go, and they can move at a faster pace, and they can dig a little bit deeper. We chose to identify some key Marzano strategies that we really felt were going to give us our biggest bang for our buck. These are strategies that I didn't see a lot when I walked around in classrooms last year, or strategies that when I did see them, I did not see them being used correctly. So we are working on processing new knowledge, because that's a big piece, as well as probing incorrect answers of low expectancy students. So many times, we're so afraid of digging with that kid a little bit deeper, putting them on the spot, but if we don't ask them those questions, we just don't know where they're struggling. We identified a better way to connect with, or we identified that there's a need to better connect with our clientele and explore new strategies to engage them in their needs. We're doing a book study as a building to kind of get some new strategies and some new ideas. Some additional steps. We restructured the reading program a little bit. Many of my teachers have been used to doing one story a week. You start it on Monday, you do the spelling vocabulary. On Friday, we're taking all these quizzes, and it just doesn't give a lot of time to dig into the skills and to apply them to the story. So instead of doing one story a week, we're going to take as long as we need to on that story to really make sure they understand those skills that are being taught. We don't have to give them a quiz every Friday. So it's, you know, it's changing that thinking around a little bit. Redefine the purpose for reading groups. Back in the day, we had reading groups where everyone got together and they were all reading, you know, a certain story. Nothing wrong with that, but let's think about what those students' needs are. You know, let's group students based on their similar needs, not necessarily just their reading ability, so that you can really focus on a specific need or skill that they have when you have them in a small group. We were able to purchase some additional nonfiction material. That was an area that we saw a weakness in. We needed to expose our kids to some more nonfiction. The district provides a great amount to us, but we wanted a little bit more, so we were able to purchase some time for kids. Goal-setting with the students. The students want to do well. The students want to beat their MAP scores. They want to grow. But if we don't tell them what those scores are and what they mean, and where their growth projections are, and where they should be scoring if they want to be considered, you know, growing a year, they don't know what they're shooting for. They don't find the value in that number. So we're working with our students and our families to goal-set and have those students meet certain benchmark scores. We're continuing our small group interventions for phonemic awareness, fluency, and comprehension. We're continuing to seek additional support. We've been very fortunate that we have WIS kids in our, in our school. Cincinnati Mind Machine has been very generous to us, our business partner, and they do send some young men over who not just play with the kids on the playground, but they want to actually get involved in some of their learning. So they, they tutor them, and then we've had some parents that have come in and help One thing that we are really, really focused on this year is using the data. Yes, it gives us great numbers, but it also gives us so much more. And I know this is very blurry, but this is the best that I could do. One thing we're really focusing on is that class breakdown report. So if you go into MAP, any teacher can pull up a report, and it breaks it down by different goal areas. So this is a third grade language arts. You can see there's three goal areas: literature, informational text, vocabulary acquisition, and usage. It will differentiate the data for them. It'll tell them what kids are in what RIT range, who's your lowest, who's your highest, is there a kid that's really low in nonfiction but really high everywhere else? So these teachers at the, at their fingertips have their classes sorted. It doesn't have to be all of that paperwork and writing names and flipping, it's right there in the report. So that's a very easy piece of data that they can use. Not only that, this is an interactive report, so if you were to click on a name in any of those boxes, it's going to take you to what's called the learning continuum. And right here, it tells the teachers exactly where, what they need to do next with these students. So if I had a student who, and this is informational text, scored in the 161 RIT range, this gives me multiple strategies that I could use with them to get them, this is where they are instructionally. These are the things that I need to work on. They need to locate details in an advertisement, locate details in informational text, determine the main idea of an informational text. These are the skills of where they are. So it takes the guesswork out of it. I keep telling my teachers, it's not that we're not working hard, but I think we just have to work smarter. That's our big thing, because I know it gets very overwhelming when we don't have the scores that we want. But I think if we just work smarter, use the tools that we have, and make some changes to a few things that we're doing, I know that our, our scores will improve. How are we going to know this? I have been all around monitoring fidelity of certain strategies that are being used. Our TBT pre- and post-test assessments, we've already finished one round of TBTs. My third grade language arts decided that they wanted to take a year-long goal, which is identifying main idea and supporting details. This is something that they hope the kids have mastered by the end of the year, but they wanted to see exactly where they were at the beginning. So at the beginning of the year, we had 17% of our kids that could do that skill. That was it. Through a, you know, a quarter of remediation, different strategies, you know, we were able to get up to 40% of our students knowing that skill. So we're happy with that, because this is a year-long goal that they have. So we feel like we're on the right track, and what we're doing is working. We continue to dibble twice a month. We'll have our December MAP data coming up, which will show me our students on track for meeting that end-of-year growth projection. And then, of course, we have our new third grade reading assessment in December. When we get those results, that'll give us more evidence of, of how we are doing.
On the OAA data with that drop that you showed, and I appreciate you acknowledging that, was that always judged by the same, to see a drop like that over two years is alarming. Was that always judged the same way? Was that around the year before, 11, 12? Are you just giving us three years, or... Or has the standard changed?
I gave you the three years that I was here.
Okay.
I could probably dig and find, I'm sure I can find the 11, 12.
If you don't have that handy, that's fine, but I just, has it always been the same barometer that it's been judged by? If I'm asking that question the right way, has something changed that's affected that besides just a change in the students?
They did increase the percentage of students that needed to pass it to get the indicator, but, I mean, it's, it's still, these numbers are still carrying apples to apples.
It's essentially the same test.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it certainly gives us a, a goal.
Yes.
To shoot for.
Yes.
Right, Todd?
Correct. And what I liked from Lori and Dustin last week is, they are up here accepting responsibility. They are talking to you about tools that they have in their toolbox, Marzano, and how she's picked out two key strategies that she can monitor, that she noticed weren't there last year. She then is no longer just talking about data. Her teachers are showing you how she's using the data, and then it gave you all those interventions they could use for every student, and it was individualized, everything she said. You know, Lori's name's there, but Lori's not the one who's sitting in the class, so what she's trying to do is to motivate her teachers to change to meet what our culture and our schools are becoming, and, and that's to individualize things, just like we talked about at the board retreat. Every kid be individually accountable and achieve at high levels. So she's taken this on, she's done a great job with what she's looked at in terms of data, and then her strategy she's put in place to try to conquer them.
Great, yes, I do appreciate you pointing that out to the board. Did you have something, Michael?
I'm going to try. How did Weigle do with getting the third grade students to score high enough to pass the third grade reading guarantee? What are the pass rates there?
We were able to have all but one student meet the third grade reading guarantee. Students that did not meet it based on the OAA were able to meet it from the MAP assessment. It is a little easier for the students to get that MAP benchmark than it is the OAA. They also have multiple attempts at the MAP they can, they can use.
Lori, the one thing that I really, that resonated with me is the transition thing where kids are the second grade, and then all of a sudden, they're going to a different school, several, you just, I guess, have two elementaries where we don't do that. And if this levy passes, then those days in a few years will be over. And if this levy passes, then those days in a few years will be over. But I can just imagine, you know, you're just getting into a routine and a comfort zone, and then you're gone. New people, new building, new everything.
It's scary for third graders. They walk into a building with these big fifth graders. Many of them have never been in the building before. It's a transition. You know, just the academic requirements from second to third is, is significant. And it takes a long time for them to adjust. And some of them right now, honestly, are still adjusting. And I guess I, I think, you know, I, I hope the day comes where we're all back together because I think that does make a difference.
What kind of strategies do you have in place to get the parents a buy-in on this? I'm sure that's...
Buy-in on?
Just to support all this and to learn how to help their students at home and...
Of, of any grade level where we have parent buy-in, third grade reading is probably our biggest. Because the parents are aware of the third grade reading guarantee, and it scares them. And the thought of their child being retained does kind of bring them to the forefront. And they do, they, they help us a lot with the students. And I think, you know, why our OAA scores do not reflect very well, and the fact that we only retained one, one student, I think shows that our parents step up, our teachers step up, the students are learning. Every parent wants their kid to know how to read. Every parent, I mean, of, of all of the skills that they, we teach in that building, that's the one. And third grade parents know that it's really important, and we emphasize that, and we invite them in, we talk to them about it. You know, each parent received the MAP scores with an explanation. Here's your student's goal, this is what we're talking about, these are going to be part of our conversations at conferences. It's going to be very data-driven, goal-setting. This is what we need to work on, these are some strategies that I'm working on with your child.
How, program last week after the kids were singing, did you know I had a special program for parents that...
We did. After our third grade concert, we had what we called a Title Information Night. So all those students that receive our Title I services, that receive support in their reading, were invited to come, and their parents came. And we told them a little bit more information about the Title I program, how it's funded, what we do, what resources, why we're working with their children is always a bit, you know, why are you working with my kid, you know? As well as gave them some resources and some strategies that they could use to help them even more at home. We gave them a tour of the Title I room and the different materials that they have so that they have a better understanding and a better comfort level with what we're doing with their students.
I think that the good point you just had about, I mean, if you still have kids that are adjusting being in the building, I mean, that's something that two of our other elementaries don't even have to deal with because we've got the kids all together. So let's hope when this levy passes that we can eliminate that barrier and move forward.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for, thank you for a good report. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time. Our next item is report from employee organizations. Is there anyone here from an employee-related organization that would like to speak? I can see no one. Report from a classified employee organization. I see no one wants to speak. A report from school-related organizations. Is there anyone here from a school-related organization that would like to speak? I see no one. Our community comments. I have a card from Marilyn Ford that would like to speak about millage-questioned contractors and merit semifinalists. So please come up to the microphone.
Thank you very much for your time. I have not been really too involved as a school board since my children have been out of school for a good many years, but I kind of try to keep a finger in and through the Northwest Press and various other contacts with people who have students hear what's going on. My question wasn't, I don't know, well, I probably should know, what is our current millage now?
I'll defer that to Amy. The total millage from 1960 till 2015?
Current millage right now without the levy that's expiring?
Total voted or total collected?
Now, what was that question again?
Total, we voted, there's 51.88 mills that have been voted.
Fifty-one?
By the community. We collect 29 of those mills on residential and 33 on business.
Oh, okay.
And that goes back to the number of levies that have been passed since the district became consolidated and...
And because now, that does include like the bond levy for, what is it, Monford Heights is still?
No, that's just current operating.
Oh, that's just current operating? Okay. And are those all continuing except this one that's expiring, or do some of them have other expirations?
I think the 2012 levy expires in 17. The 2010 levy expires December 31st of this year.
That was 2012 and the 2010?
There's two five-year levies. The 2010 expires December 31st of this year, and the 2012 expires December 31st, 2017.
And I did, because I finally got to the library and picked up the information from the League of Women Voters, I had assumed this, now the replacement with the one mill for the tax for the operating is a continuous then?
That is correct.
Does not have any, is a non-expiring one? Okay. And just curious, and maybe no one here knows, who are the contractors on Struble and Weigel?
I think there's a plaque out in the entrance hall of, at Weigel.
Always that would tell, because I noticed that in the one comment was that they felt that these buildings were not particularly well-built, although, I don't know, they seem to have served pretty well.
Well, a lot of them are cinder block construction as opposed to our older building over at Colrain, which was poured concrete foundation. And I think Colrain Elementary would be there a long time from now. These other buildings, after 50 or 60 years of freeze stall.
Yeah.
And just the sheer number of people that go in and out of them every day, these were constructed differently than our, than our older building was.
And I know, because I was here when those were built. In fact, my oldest started at Weigel when the year it opened. She started in kindergarten that year and went all the way through. So that, and I do think that where you mentioned about having the K-2.5 all in the same building would certainly be a big help to many of those. I think, yes, for a young child to go into a new school is always hard, although at least they're coming as a class, so they do have some of that comfort of their, their people.
And I can also tell you, as the former business director, we have $9 to $18 million worth of roofing that needs to be done. So we're going to get a large rain the next two days. There will be buckets in many hallways, and it's not a safe atmosphere. It's a, condition is not conducive to learning. It's very humid. Kids are coming to school with more asthma-related issues. And Northwest High School, as great as it looks, we couldn't have a simple thing like a pancake breakfast because the electricity would not hold up the thing. So there are some great needs out there.
Oh, yes, especially with all the technology that is coming. And my other comment that really kind of made me come, and I noticed that you have here, two commended merit scholarship. Are these both seniors this year then?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And did you say they were Colrain or Northwest?
Both Colrain students.
Okay. Because I've been very concerned the last three years, and I think this is true for Northwest. I know that Colrain has not had any semifinalist merit scholars. And I think we need to focus on, you know, getting those scores up in the younger grades so that by the time these students get to high school, there's no reason why we shouldn't have a couple. And for the last three years, and I, I don't believe Northwest has had any for the past... There may have been one year.
From Northwest.
One.
From Northwest.
Okay. Because I didn't see them mentioned in an article that I had clipped out. But, and I know that right now, our student population is down from what it was back in the 80s, but there were several years where there were five, three at Colrain High School. And since 2001, most years up until 2011, there had been one, or a few cases where there were two. But then in 2012, 13, and 14, there were none at all. And I don't think that speaks too well for our district.
I think there's certainly room for improvement. I don't know how that compares to other districts.
And I didn't have a chance to compare it with the student populations because back in the mid 80s, there were, well, in 85, there were three, the year before, there were five, then there were three, then there were five. So in a five-year period, there were 18 students. And I know that our population was higher then, so I'm not sure percentage-wise, but I still think that's kind of a, a big drop from 18 in five years down to none in the last three, and in the previous 10, only 14. And that was just at Colrain. I don't have the...
Yeah, we, we have changed our curriculum where we offer a lot more AP courses, College Credit Plus, which is universities coming in and taking our teachers through an interview to see if they're qualified to teach college-type courses. They're then changing the rigor of the curriculum so it is totally related to what a student would see in college. If these courses are passed, just like our AP courses, then those count as actual college credit. So those should help tremendously.
Yeah. And I meant to, because I believe it was Sunday's paper, there was something, an article, and I meant to go back to that this afternoon and then got tied up and didn't as to what is going on with some of these advanced placements. I think we just need to keep challenging those students. And I'll admit too, that from a background of having done a fair amount of volunteer work in mainly the elementary school, that the culture of the kids is different now than what it was. So you, I think you were mentioning about how we have to perhaps deal with this in some different ways than...
Yeah, we have to, and we will, because it's still not an excuse. We got to up our game big time. It's not acceptable.
So I appreciate it. And I had been a little bit kind of on the fence with some of the levy things, but I realized that the need for the technology ability in many of the schools and the ability to get the grades back together is an important thing for the levy then. So thank you very much for your time.
Well, I appreciate you coming up with such well-informed questions. You've obviously done your homework.
Well, not quite as much as I would like to.
Well, thank you for, for being here.
Marilyn, I just wanted to thank you. I've known her for many, many years, and I, I love the fact that she'll always ask the challenging questions. And when I would run into her, for years she worked at AAA, and she would ask, you know, if a levy was coming up or if there was a question, and you are the epitome of an informed voter, and I wish others would do, follow in your footsteps. Because people need to know what they're voting on and what the needs are. And so thank you for coming out on a Monday night and coming to the board meeting, and it's nice to see you.
Oh, thank you. And yes, I, I get very frustrated sometimes because I've been much more involved. I attend the township meetings regularly, and I've been much more just with general town things rather than coming to this meeting. And I get very frustrated there.
Well, thank you. I, I don't go to the township meetings because I come to these meetings. I have scouts on Tuesday night, so that's where I'm at on Tuesdays. And I know they've got a lot to think about over there right now also, so, at Colrain.
Yeah, it's, I mean, everybody has.
All right. Well, thank you very...
Thank you all for all of your service.
We certainly appreciate that. Thank you very much, too. Our next item is reports of the treasurer. Mr. Bowlin?
Yes, I will turn this over to Amy to talk about financial reports.
The financial reports in your packet are from the month of September, and the cash flow has been updated to reflect the forecast, which I will be going over in a little while. And the list of bills for the month of September are also included in your packet.
So the treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the financial reports as listed.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would just like to point out that all this information has been posted online since Friday, and, and we've all had a chance to review it, along with the public reviewing it. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a certified licensed personnel item, Mr. Bowlin.
Yes, the next is certified licensed personnel retirements and resignations. You will find two acceptance, acceptance of certified resignations, one acceptance of tutor resignation, one acceptance of athletic event worker registration, one acceptance of extra-duty procedural resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a classified personnel item, Mr. Bowlin.
Yes, this deals with classified retirements and resignations. You will find three acceptance of classified resignations, one acceptance of classified substitute procedural resignation. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a fiscal item, Mr. Bowlin.
Yes, this is the five-year forecast in notes, and it will be given by Amy West.
October, and time for our forecast again. One good thing, with our forecast, we're very conservative, so our numbers don't really change much from year to year. Where we've been and where we are, in 2009, we had a fund balance of 15 million, and currently, at the end of last year, we were up at 40 million. Our cash balance policy, as recommendation by Moody's, is to have three months or 90 days of your expenditures, which puts us between 20 and 25,000 depending on the year. Our current valuation for real estate taxes is 1.3 billion, which means we collect 1.3 million dollars per mill. We're collecting, and to answer your question, Marilyn, we're collecting 29.84 mills on our residential and small agricultural properties, and 35.55 mills on the commercial and industrial. The voted is 51.88 mills, and there's 4.33 inside millage. If we were at the 20-mill floor instead of 29, we would receive inflation on all valuation instead of just on new construction in that one year. Our projected real estate taxes for our fiscal year is 40 million dollars, which equates to about 4,500 dollars per pupil of our, this year. On personal property taxes, we collect on public utility personal property at a current valuation of 47 million. This is paid at the full 51.88 mills or 2.5 million dollars this year. On our unrestricted grants, which is foundation funding from the state, our state funding this year is at 5,900 dollars a student. They changed the state formula at the last biennial budget to include, you know, your property wealth and your income wealth to equate to the state share. If your property valuation index is greater than your income index, they take two-thirds of the property and 1/30 of your income. And our current state share is 38%, which equates to 2,200 dollars per pupil, including the taxes. At 4,500 dollars a pupil, we receive 6,700 dollars per pupil or an additional 855 dollars due to local support. Other revenues we receive is economically disadvantaged or 1.5 million dollars a year, and also cash direct reimbursements. These are on our high-needs, special-needs students. There's a property tax allocation we receive, where the state pays tax credits 10% and an additional 2.5% on your owner-occupied home. There's also the homestead tax credit for seniors over 65 who are living in their home. And both of these revenue sources will revert back to the homeowner when you have a new levy after August of 2013. We're projected at 5.8 million dollars this year, but also want to point out that the potential personal property hold harmless reimbursement was a line item vetoed by the governor, which cost this district 654,000 dollars a year through 2019. Other revenue are things like reimbursements, donations, tuition paid by other districts, interest, and rent. If we had an open enrollment policy, we could generate the full 5,900... If we had an open enrollment policy, we could generate the full 5,900 dollars per pupil. Other financing sources, which are below the line on your forecast, are for refunds of prior year expenditures and rebates, and also if we had sale of assets such as buses, vans, type of. On the expenditure side, our salaries and wages for all our staff are about fifty-three percent of our entire budget. We are a service industry. It equates to about 45 million dollars. This includes steps, extra time, overtime, supplementals, raises, severance, and it's also anything that has been negotiated with our unions or given to our classified staff. On retirements and benefits, the board's share for retirement is fourteen percent into the state retirement systems. We have Medicare at 1.45, and we have our health and life insurance premiums. We did save 5.9 percent on health insurance this year due to having low claims. We are self-insured, so claims drive premiums. Benefits make up 21 percent of our budget. Again, we are a service industry, and it's 17.6 million dollars a year. Purchased services are for items like utilities, special education costs, also for students attending elsewhere, such as open enrollment out, community schools, and scholarships. List line item also is for repairs of maintenance, property, and vehicle insurance premiums and professional development. Twenty-one percent of our overall expenses make up purchased services, or 17 and a half million dollars. For students that are attending elsewhere, for open enrollment, we have around 179 students or a little over a million dollars going to other districts. We pay the full 5,900 dollars, which includes the state share plus local taxes. On community schools, we have 465 students attending at a little over 3 million dollars. Again, this is the full amount, which is the state share plus any local. And on scholarships, we have 115 Peterson and 34 autism scholarships for 1.7 million. And previously, 62 percent for the local tax portion did come to the district for students that were attending, like parochial schools or other scholarship entities. On supplies and materials, these are for our student, teachers, office supplies, as well as custodial, cleaning, toilet paper, paper towels, and transportation, fuel, parts, tires for our buses. Four percent of our overall expenditures are spent on supplies, or a little over 3 Capital outlay includes the cost of equipment and other capital items. Mainly, our capital outlay is spent out of our permanent improvement fund. Our technology and bus purchases, we have a technology plan and a bus purchase plan that we spend our permanent improvement fund. Most of our capital outlay in the general fund is less than 1 percent, or around 250,000 dollars. However, our master facilities plan indicates that we need 37 million dollars over the next five years to keep our buildings warm, safe, and dry. Without the upcoming levy, we would have to find 37 million dollars within our general fund budget because our permanent improvement fund has taken with the technology and our bus purchases to make our buildings warm, safe, and dry, and to do all these renovations. Other expenditures are items like liability insurance premiums, audit costs, the utter and treasure fees for collecting our taxes, and the county educational service center fees. We have transfers out for transportation for athletic programs and also student fee waivers. Any student fee waivers have to be paid for by the general fund. So on a revenue versus expenditures per year, the lighter lines are with the proposed levies, including the current proposed operating, combined bond operating levy that's on the ballot, and also the 2017 emergency levy renewal. Without those levies, you're looking at the dark lines that we would have to make significant cuts to make up. The 1.5 million in 2018, while that is a negative number, it is also a reappraisal and taxes away and another biennial budget. So those are two large revenue sources for the district. And with an 85 million dollar budget, 1.5 million dollars, we should be able to, and management, we're looking at to make up prior to then, and it will compound. So we should be able to address this negative spending and turn it around to a positive. This is the one that will be difficult to do without significant cuts. So on your unrestricted fund balance, the actual balance can be spent on items such as salaries and benefits and supplies, as well as higher-type expense items such as utilities and special education needs. Our overall fund balance, again, the lighter bars are with proposed levies, the current combined bond operating levy, and the 2017 emergency levy renewal. The darker lines are without both of those levies. If you remember, we cited when we proposed the levy that we would spend 10 million dollars of our general fund balance on the master facilities project, which gets our cash balance down to the cash balance policy right here between 20 and 25 thousand million dollars, depending on the year. No questions?
I think it's a very well-done, easily-explained report. Appreciate the simplicity of it. Moving right along to our next item is a fiscal item. Mr. Bowlen?
Yes, we have two vendor contracts for approval. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education authorize the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, or Amy, please call a vote. Chris isn't here tonight. Motion carries five to zero. Amended certificate of estimated resources, Mr. Bowlen?
Yes, I'll turn this over to Mrs. Wells.
Amended certificates of resources is our total resources available as approved by the Hamilton County Budget Commission. So the board just needs to accept it so that we could then appropriate it to spend.
The superintendent recommends, I'm on the wrong page. Hold on one second.
Item eighteen.
The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education accept the amended certificate of estimated resources as listed.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a general business item. Mr. Bowlen?
I love technology. The next is a donation to the Northwest Local School District for 2015. This is a donation of an athletic van to Colrain High School by the Colrain High School Boosters. It is greatly appreciated and all that the boosters do for Colrain High School on a yearly basis. This is just one of about three or four that they have donated. It helps out the golf teams, some of the bowling teams when they don't have as many athletes as they would need for a bus, so it saves them a lot of money. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the donation to Northwest Local School District as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. And the donation is approved, five to zero. Our next item is a certificated licensed personnel item.
Yes, this is certificated licensed personnel items that deal with three approvals of extra-duty contracts, one approval of athletic event worker, two approvals of volunteers, and a resolution to hire non-licensed coaches. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. The motion carries five to zero, and our next item is a classified personnel item.
Yes, this is a resolution to recommend termination. So it's one resolution to recommend termination. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution as attached.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. Termination is approved, five to zero. Our next item is a classified personnel item.
Yes, you will find three approval of initial appointments and one approval of classified substitutes to be paid at various rates. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel item as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Amy, please call a vote. The motion carries five to zero, and the next item is another classified personnel item.
Yes, this is the treasurer's office personnel. It's the approval of an initial appointment. The treasurer recommends the Board of Education approve the treasurer office personnel as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. The motion carries five to zero. Master facility plan update, Mr. Bowlen?
Yes, two topics I'd like to discuss. One is the hiring of a CMR after the levy passes, and we are thinking positively here. The RFQ closes on November 2nd for CMR proposals. Our timeline would be one week from then, which is November 9th. We would like to have the RFPs turned in so we then could determine how many we will interview and create a short list. And then we would look at setting up interviews on November 10th through the 13th. Our thoughts was it would be Chris, Amy, myself, with Roth, and two board members, or trying to see if your opinion is you would like all five of you to be on that committee. So just checking to see what your thoughts are.
I think with something that substantial, if this does come to pass, it'd probably be five of us, but I'm certainly interested in the opinion of the other board members.
Yeah, I would concur with you. This is kind of the biggest event, construction-wise, building-wise, that we might have for the next 50 years. And I would think that the whole board would need to be part of this.
We're all taking responsibility for it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Chris. Yeah, 100 percent.
What dates were you?
We would be looking somewhere between November 10th and 13th. The 10th is a Tuesday.
It's also the Capitol Conference.
We'll be at Columbus.
And so we could try, we're out, what, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? So we don't want to be Friday. So we'd be looking at that next Monday.
I think for the purposes of your question, I think the five of us agree that the five of us should be involved in it.
I'll get with you with dates.
So we'll come up with some dates.
And we want to move on this as quickly as possible, obviously, because we don't want to lose any time. Because you think 2018, August is far away, but it's here before you know it. The other thing I'd like to discuss is I've had some opportunities to answer some questions about our master facility plan and the levy. So I wanted to go over a couple bullet points so our community is on board with everything we want to do. Mainly, they've asked questions, can you really reduce our taxes? And then they ask, if you can reduce our taxes, how is that even possible? Well, we're able to reduce our community school taxes by the fact that the district made some severe cuts for the last six to eight years, totaling around 270 staff and around 17 million dollars. With these cuts, the Board of Education decided to reduce the bond operating levy by 10 million from what it was last May. By doing this, the Board of Education was able to remove the 4.52 emergency mill levy and replace it with a 3.82 bond levy, 2.82 being bond, one for operating expenses. This is how we're able to lower taxes. And then the question has been, on a $100,000 home, how much would that be? Roughly $4 for a $150,000 home, roughly $9. What happens if the levy doesn't pass? Well, if we lose that emergency operating levy, the district loses $6 million a year. That is a large amount of money that we cannot afford to lose. So with that will come some decisions we'll have to make and do some presentations to the board so we can decide what direction we want to go. But we cannot afford to lose $6 million. If Issue 16 passes, we can offer all-day kindergarten, which ties directly to Lori's presentation. We get our kids for a half-day right now. The ones we get for a half-day sometimes don't attend preschool. To get them for a full day and get them out of kindergarten reading and doing math would be huge for our district. We can also air-condition Colrain Elementary, and people say, why is that big? Well, if we build the new buildings and air-condition Colrain, we can start school early. So let's go back to our AP courses and that. Right now, we lose eight to 12 instruction days because we don't start school as early as everybody else. In Butler and Hamilton County, we were one of maybe three districts who started, who did not start the first or second week of August. We started the last week of August. So we lost eight to 12 instructional days by that. Throw in some emergency snow days and some other catastrophe days, that's a lot of time our AP kids losing their classes and our college credit course, or plus courses. We need those days of instruction, so that will help. We need to renovate our other buildings. I think Amy showed you how much we needed to do the renovations. We need warm, safe, and dry buildings. And I cannot throw out how important it is to have safe buildings. We know what the shootings are going on with the college campuses and other buildings. We want our buildings as safe as possible so our kids are protected and our parents feel safe when our kids go to school. So we need to do some upgrades there. When we build three new elementary buildings, we will try to build them as identical as possible. I've gotten a lot of questions from the community, can you make them look exactly the same so you don't have to pay for different drawings and architect plans? We will do our best for that to occur, but remember, we're able to save money and do this at a more affordable cost because we don't have to buy property to put the buildings on. One will go on Pleasant Run Elementary site, one will go on Taylor site, and one will go on Struble site. We will try to make them as identical as possible. We know there'll be two stories, but because of the layout of the land, they may not be the same shape or direction. But they will be two-story buildings, and what they contain inside may be the same. Why did we not use OSFC funds? I think you saw by our property wealth, we don't get a whole lot of extra funding because of that. We checked with them about two years ago. We were still two to three years off the list before it was our turn to qualify for OSFC. So it takes property wealth in districts, and it takes you down to your turn. We were two or three years away, and we didn't qualify for much. We were going to be looking at 17 or 20 percent. So if you take a neighbor district like Mount Healthy, they built new schools and qualified for 75 to 78 percent. We qualified for 17 percent. Plus, if you take their money, you have to follow OSFC standards, and you put more into buildings than need to be there. So it does not make any sense to even take it.
Well, Todd, I'd like to comment on that. We talked about this eight, 10 years ago, and frankly, I don't need anybody in Columbus telling the community how we should do things. And that would stand with what I've always thought about. We have an elected board. Let's run it here. Yeah, it's nice to take money from the state, but the strings that come along with it are not acceptable. And that extra, what did you say, 17 percent? Our costs might be that much higher just by following their guidelines.
Absolutely.
I just assume to have the folks in this community take responsibility for it. It's something that you have to live here to be able to use, so why not fund it locally? I don't need Columbus climbing all over us.
100 percent with you. Why did we put an operating bond on? The operating bond is there to make sure that when we build the skills, or schools, we can still operate them. I'd like to sit here and tell you, new schools will cost less, but if you're air conditioning new buildings, the cost is going to go up in some manner or form. So that is important also. People have asked, well, you're hiding levies from us. I think we've talked about it tonight. Our next one is due in 2017. The board decided to remove the one that was due from 2010, but we, if we lose that, we lose $6 million. So that's very important. And then lastly, this is about our community. It's about building new schools, showing financial stability, being transparent, and attracting new families to our district. I was at Mount Healthy when we built them. There's other people in this room that were, and new families moved in, and school enrollment increased. And everything I've heard at the township meetings and everything else is, how do we improve our community? Well, one, it starts with academics, and that's on me, and we will take care of that. But two, you put new buildings in there, and you give places that are conducive to learning, and we take care of our kids. It just generates a better atmosphere. It attracts new families. And like I said, when my dad passed away, and I said, where do you show them for a school? And they go down to Pleasant Run Elementary, and they see no air conditioning, and if they're there on a rainy day like it'll be the next two days, there'll be buckets in the hallways, and it's just not a situation that's good for our kids. So this is about our community making it stronger, and I've tried to address all the questions that we've had that have just popped up recently. And I know we have this election on November 3rd and Issue 16. The board is 100 percent behind it. Check out their articles they put in the Northwest Press. They're on the votenorthwestschools.org. You can see everything they've said about it. It's out there. They're public about it. They're talking positively about it, and we're doing everything we can, so.
Thank you, Todd. Our next item is a classified personnel item.
I'm trying to get there.
Job descriptions for mechanic and head mechanic. We have several job descriptions coming up.
We're going to have several job descriptions. What has occurred is once Jack and Stephanie moved into their positions, I knew from being the business director that some of our job descriptions were way out of date and way too old. So you have a series here that we want to present to you tonight for information only, so you can look them over, and if you have any questions, let us know. And then we will bring them back for action at the November board meeting. But I didn't want to do info and action on the same night because it's been so long. I really want you to have a chance to look at them, and any feedback you want to provide is greatly appreciated.
And anybody in the public will be able to see these also.
Yes.
So the first one is mechanic and head mechanic.
Yeah, the first one is job description for mechanic and head mechanic.
Okay, and then our next item is the transportation secretary and transportation coordinator?
Yes, we've had a complete turnover basically of transportation, so it's been quite a few years since we've updated those. So the next one you'll see is the So the next one you'll see is the Transportation Secretary and the Transportation Coordinator. After that...
We'll have the, go ahead.
Yeah, after that, you'll see 15-4, job descriptions for Transportation Supervisor and Assistant Transportation Supervisor.
And then the Bus Driver job description?
Yep, job description for the Bus Driver, 15-5.
Okay.
For 15-6, job descriptions for Athletic and Activities Fund, Receipt Specialist and Accounts Payable Specialist.
And then 15-7?
15-7 is a job description for Maintenance Supervisor and Custodial Supervisor. Chris has had some great ideas that he's wanting to change how we do supervision of custodial staffs, looking at team cleaning and other things during the summer to make our buildings cleaner.
And then 15-8 is a Curriculum and Instruction Item?
Yes, I'll turn this over to Darryl Yader, and he will talk about our weighted grading scale addendum.
Currently in our Program Studies books, we had a committee that looked at the weighted grading scale at the high school and trying to get that more in line with how other districts that are similar to us approach weighted grading. Currently, we have a six-point weighted grading scale for our high schools. The plan is to move to a five-point scale, which moves us a little bit more in line with other districts that are similar to us. The plan was to do a phase-in so that with the current freshmen, they would start with a five-point scale, and the kids who started with a six-point would end with it. The difficulty with that is becoming more on a logistical side, that from a systems standpoint, the capacity to be able to generate course codes that are mirrored of each other, some that have six points, some that have five point, and with all the reporting that we do through EMUS to the state and the way that we upload rosters for testing for state assessments, it's not feasible to be able to run that many courses and manage them. So what we're looking at is right now, this addendum would take all high school students back to the six-point this year, and then next year, it would transition all students to the five-point. We've had committees that have looked at this for the past three years or so, led by some of our high school administrators. We have some additional work that we need to do to get this in place for next year where we will be involving the administrators again with some parents to kind of look at how this transition that's not going to be a phase-in will affect the GPAs required for SUMA and things like that. But that's all stuff that we will work through in committees and then put in the Program of Studies books that will come to you in December, January.
Todd, are you getting any input from your students group that you have as well?
Our first meeting is this Friday, October 30th, so we will bring that to your attention. A lot of this will affect as they try to become Sumla, Kumla, and how it goes there. But if you look at the true basics of what gets kids money and in colleges, it goes back to their ACT and SAT scores. A lot of districts, and I learned it from my kids because I was begging for money for all three, a weighted GPA is thrown out. It really means nothing. It's your ACT and your SAT scores is the bottom line, so.
But yeah.
We will get their feedback on Friday, yes.
You get their buy-in and their input, it'll make things a little bit easier.
I laugh when you say you're looking to help fund your kids in college, so am I.
I keep saying, they've got that great weighted GPA. He goes, that gets them nothing.
It does.
That's money.
The ACT score does.
They don't even look at the weighted.
The ACT score certainly helps, no question. Our next item is a miscellaneous item.
Yes, we have had a couple requests over the past two or three board meetings to have some kind of summary of what occurred at the symposium at Colrain High School. So I said at the last meeting I would have Darryl talk about how that is relating to our school justice program, so he's going to give an explanation and some guidance on what we're going to do as a district.
So coming out of the diversity symposium from last spring, there were a lot of recommendations that were made from the different groups that met during that symposium, student groups, parent groups, and groups of administrators. And when we look at the recommendations that were made, a lot of them revolve around professional development for staff. It revolves around developing relationships between teachers and students, and it's about improving our procedures that we have in place that support students and families. So when we look at that, we've done some things from the district to try to proactively address some of the concerns that were brought up. One of the first things, you've heard a lot of people talk about Marzano, it's the evaluation system we use for our teachers. One of the things that we've done to start with, with that whole relationship piece, is in that evaluation system, one of the elements that the administrators look for involves relationships. And so we've highlighted that for administrators this year, that there are several elements in that evaluation system that deal specifically with being, developing supportive relationships with students and with teachers who are addressing situations with objectivity and control. And so we're asking our principals to look every time they go into classrooms for those elements so that we can support our teachers in developing that skill set that will support those environments. The other thing that we have done is, we had an opportunity that was presented to us, and I want to introduce a few people, but Elaine Fink helped to bring this to our attention as an opportunity. And Georgetown University created an opportunity for a school justice partnership program that they ran, that was a week-long institute that really looked at developing inter-agency agreements that support students. So we took a team to Georgetown University to be a part of this week-long symposium to do a lot of self-reflection about how we as a school district can work collaboratively with multiple agencies to support students in a way that creates opportunities. So you heard Lori earlier talk about her, in her principal's report, that students, student discipline is a concern and something that they're addressing, and the fact that when students are suspended, they're not in school, they're not learning. So trying to come up with safety nets that create opportunities for students to be supported and stay in school, in class, and learning. So there was a group of us that went. It was Paulette Crowley and Elaine Fink from Legal Aid who is here tonight, and Carla Gunther, who is a magistrate with Hamilton County. We also, with us, took Susan Smith, Principal of Northwest High School, and Lindsay Gibson, who is our district social worker, and Dean Dorflying, one of our school resource officers. Deana Naderman is here because once we came back, our team expanded to really try to figure out how we're going to expand this and make this a reality. Out of that, we came up with three different actions that the district is going to work on to support students in a way that keeps them in school, learning, and in a safe, supportive environment. The first thing we're doing as a district is, as a district, we're doing a self-analysis and audit of all of our procedures. So how do we structure our in-school suspension to be supportive and proactive in a way that helps kids understand the behavior that got them there and strategies that will keep them from repeating their behavior to get there? Ways that we have other things, like the elementaries have an alternative learning program, and how we can bolster that to help students learn how to understand the behavior and rectify it before it gets worse. We're looking at how we support our students through our response to intervention program, our positive behavior supports. We have a lot of structures in our district, and one of the things we want to do is look at how we align all of those so that we work smarter, not harder. Another thing that Ms. Reilly said that they're trying to do. District-wide, we're trying to make sure that our supports and structures are in place to support kids in a way that helps them be proactive, reflective, and make better choices. If things happen where students make bad choices, we want to make sure that we are helping support them in a way that creates an opportunity for growth and an opportunity for them to learn from their mistakes. So one of the other things we're doing is developing an inter-agency agreement where we can support and work with students who are in multiple agencies. So students who may be in the custody of foster care, students who have been in the juvenile justice system, students who have had run-ins with our local legal authorities, students that have been referred from Legal Aid Services. Trying to coordinate all of that so that if a student is in multiple organizations, we can bring all the people that support that student together around the table to try to be proactive and problem-solve how we support that student with the resources they have and see if there are other additional resources we can wrap around them. So we're trying to be more proactive with how we identify kids who have additional support that we can bring to the table to create opportunities for them. The other thing that we're doing is we're working as a group to create something called a SAFE Council, and we created that name ourselves. I know sometimes we create acronyms, but the official word for what we're trying to do is a diversionary court. And diversionary courts are things where if a student does something in a school that would typically result in a suspension, expulsion, possible criminal charges from the school resource officer, or if truancy charges might be filed, that instead of going through those legal channels, that we would be able to refer to this diversionary court that would be run by an unofficial hearing officer from the court, which would be Deana, who is here tonight. And the diversionary court would allow the district to bring the families to a setting with support to figure out what is the cause of what's going on and how can we support the students and the families to address the root cause of the issue so that we are being proactive in strategies to support students instead of just being punitive. So this council, and we're calling it a SAFE council because our vision for this is students and families engaged. So it's a student and family engagement council because what we want to do is when students come to this forum, we want it to be a time where families and students and school personnel, whether it be us, counselors, social workers, bringing in some outside agencies that may be able to provide mental health services if that's appropriate, but that we identify and work with families to proactively address situations and decisions that students are making to help be proactive in bringing the students back into the school in a safe manner so that they can learn and achieve it the way Ms. Reilly earlier said that she hopes for all of her children. So we have three different groups that are going to be working over the course of this year to bring it to fruition. Our goal is pretty aggressive because we're hoping that we can, by the end of January, early February, begin to have students coming to that SAFE council based on referrals from buildings and through truancy referrals so that we can start to work together to support our families and our students to help bring them back into the schools in a safe, supportive manner.
Thank you for your report, Darryl. I hope we've always kind of been working to keep our students in school.
We have, and we're just trying to reach out and find better, more strategic ways to do that in a way that engages families in a proactive, supportive environment so that we can bring people to the table in a way to solve problems.
Great, and I appreciate your efforts. Is there any other comments from the other board members?
Just a couple things to add on. We do listen to what our teachers say and what our community says, and we do have schools that spend a majority of their time on enforcing the uniform and enforcing our dress code policy. So it's one thing to enforce them, but it's another thing to have a kid sit and miss an entire class because they left a belt at home. So we're trying to come up with different strategies that gets them back into the class and deal with these things after school and evening programs. We're looking at our suspensions, can we reduce what we're giving out for them? The zero tolerance, there's a big push even that we hear through BASSA, which is our school superintendent organization, that zero tolerance is trying to be attacked and removed. So we're trying to look at all of these issues. We're trying to be receptive of what our community is telling us. We're trying to be receptive of what our teachers are telling us. I need to teach, I don't need to kick kids out of class constantly because they're out of dress code or out of uniform. But then it's also getting more parents into our schools so they can understand where we're coming from and getting to be an integral part of what we're doing. So we're just starting on this. I think Lori mentioned one key thing she's doing, the book study. Our kids and our community is changing. We've got other principals and other folks in central office who want to go back and do some Ruby Payne as we go down and revisit some of these things, which is dealing with kids of different culture and poverty and what kids from poverty bring to the table. That's Ruby Payne and her piece. But we have a lot of work to go, but we're moving slowly. I would have loved to have seen more parental, I'd like to have seen anybody attend last April. If you take away central office and all the folks that Mr. Ellis invited, you might have had eight people there. And that just wasn't what needed to happen. So we need to revisit this. Once the levy goes by, I'm going to start monthly meetings in different parts of our school district to talk about cultural issues and diversity issues and try to get people to come out and tell us exactly what they're thinking because you can't deal with what you don't know, so.
And it's probably better to get those parents in here, you know, at Lori's grade level than have the first time that they really get involved when there's a problem with a student. So we need to concentrate on bringing the parents in early, early, early on, so.
I think this is a good example. It's easy to sit up here and say, oh, we want to do what's best for kids, but this is the perfect example to kind of put your money where your mouth is. I mean, if we truly want to do what's best for kids, then we want to come up with solutions. And like you said, keeping them in the classroom, I mean, suspending them or even in-school suspensions and they're pulled out of the classroom, that's not what is what best for kids. And I like the idea of you going out into the community, not always just assume that everybody's going to come to conferences and come to school and stuff. So truly nice to see how many people were able to go to that conference in Georgetown. I'm glad we had the opportunity to do that, and I encourage us to keep doing things like that.
And I mean, I don't know all of the roles of the folks out here, but the three people that Darryl introduced, it's huge that they're willing to take an interest in our district and participate with this because without their support, this could not happen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. We'll move on to our next item. We have two guests who've taken time out of their evening to come to the board and address us. It would be Sergeant Murdock and Sergeant Patterson. Sergeant Martinez is here.
Captain Martinez, was he? Did not show today.
Okay.
He had a previous engagement that he had forgotten about, and Captain Martinez, my company commander, stepped out to take a phone call.
Okay, great. Thank you for taking time out of your schedule to be here. Love to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, sir. Members of the board, president, vice president, members of the school superintendent and assistant superintendent, and other members of the staff, I appreciate you guys letting me come out and speak a little bit. I hope I'm exciting as the rest of the meeting has been, I can't guarantee it. I practiced Taki though. I did practice this a couple times today, and I got it down to about 45 minutes. I'm playing, he told me 10 minutes and I get the whole...
Well, you can take as long as you want, but I have to keep the meeting moving along.
No, no, I got you, I got you. It's about 10 minutes. I just want to kind of introduce you guys because not everybody knows what the Army can offer. I am an Army recruiter, I'm the center leader of the Colrain Army Recruiting Center. Yes, I make no illusions. My job, my existence is about putting young, qualified individuals in the United States Army, in the Army Reserves. I make no illusions about that whatsoever. But the Army can also offer the school things in return for allowing us access and allowing us to come in and talk to the kids. And that's a little bit what I want to talk to you about today, value-added to education, okay, through us. No? Am I clicking the wrong? There we go, okay. So there's different types of programs we have, okay? We have presentations that are Army-specific, specifically deal with things we do in the Army, pay in the Army, so forth. We have STEM careers within the Army. I know STEM is a big thing now. The Army has wholeheartedly embraced STEM because a lot of our jobs require those STEM capabilities, okay? So if we can go into the STEM classrooms and talk to the kids, that benefits us and it benefits the kids, okay? We talk about women in the Army. We have a program, it's actually, I brought some visual aids back there, but they're in a pile back there. I'll leave them for everybody to look out after. We actually have a Women's History in the Military, contributions made specifically by women, okay, in the United States military, specifically the Army, but the military in general, all the way back to the Women's Auxiliary Corps, okay? There's a lot of things that wouldn't be today if it weren't for different groups, okay? And we like to talk to all the kids about that. Oh, for crying out loud, it's skipping ahead on, hold on. Am I just clicking too fast? Nope? Still going? No? Oh, for crying out loud. Okay, I'm breaking the thing, okay? I apologize, I'm not used to using these. We'll just go with what we've got. We also do national-level campaigns that the Army has put out, okay? We have a text you later, okay? We come in and talk to the kids about, listen, don't text and drive. It can wait that, I mean, most kids live within 15 minutes of a school. It can wait 10 minutes, okay? Or stop off at a restaurant, pull off and get something to drink, pull into a parking lot of the car lot, there's a million car lots down in Cora. Pull into one of them, answer your text message, get home safe, okay? Because it only takes a hot second, especially... Because it only takes a hot second, especially with these potholey, well, they're not really potholeys, but these roads out here, Colrain has got so many manholes on it, I swear. I drive a big truck and I feel like thrown out of the thing every day, okay? Imagine if you're texting and hit one of those. Two seconds, you're in the other lane, okay? Not good. So we come out and we talk to the kids about that. We also have an anti-bullying class that we do. Again, most of these are 35 minutes or so, but we can extend them out or we can break them down to whatever fits the classroom. I've done anti-bullying classes where I will go into an English class and I'll teach that anti-bullying class all day to every English class that comes in there. Generally, we do it for like ninth and 10th graders because, I mean, by the time you're a junior and senior, you're kind of at that stage where, not that it doesn't matter as a junior and senior, but it impacts the freshmen and sophomores slightly more. But we can come into the class and talk about bullying. We talk about every type of bullying, cyberbullying, big nowadays, Facebook. There's actually a huge piece on people that have been bullied on Facebook and have actually taken their lives. So we bring it right down to the kid's level. This is a 14-year-old child. Took his own life because he was bullied. Does that seem right to you? And we get the kids interacting with us, and then maybe, I mean, if we can change one kid's mind and he stops bullying, or one kid stands up for himself and goes to a teacher and says, hey, I'm being bullied, then we've affected someone, okay? Next, oh, see, it skipped on me again. I'm not pushing it that hard, I promise. We have a suicide prevention, okay? We also have suicide prevention classes. Actually really good to roll into right after the anti-bullying class. We try not to get too deep and too intense with the kids, but at the same time, we want them to know it's a very real thing. We're not trying to scare them. STEM products, America's Army Education Kinematics Simulation. We can bring this out to the school, okay? And what it does, there's different levels. There's firing range where the kids can actually take a, it's a laser weapon, kind of like a laser shot, and it introduces different relationships. That one is distance, rate, and time. We have a driving course that they sit at, introduces the difference between distance and displacement, okay? And others. Engineering workbooks. I brought a couple of those along. Some of them actually have, I mean, they all have the same thing, but some of them have pictures of soldiers doing engineer tasks in the Army. Everybody thinks of the Army, they think of a guy out there with a gun shooting, right? We have every job you can think of in the civilian world, we have it in the Army because we are fully self-sufficient when we deploy. Except maybe, you know, pot smoker, but we have those and we're trying to get rid of them, okay? I'm just saying, we're trying to get rid of those. We have every job. We're trying to filter those out. Okay, but the engineering workbooks are really good for those engineering classes because they actually come with isometric graphic paper. Who in here deals with isometric graphic paper? Not this guy. We have one! Nice! I'm a medic, I don't deal with that. I deal with medical stuff, but it does actually have the graphic paper inside of it. And we have those that we can give to the classes, to the courses, to the instructors to help out the students. I hope I clicked it just once. Okay, we also have STEM posters for medical, okay? Teeth, we have the musculature STEM posters. We also have the anterior skeleton. Now, does it go into every tiny book? No, it doesn't. But it gives what the high school kids are learning, right? This is where I would come in. I would come in and teach these all day long. I love these things. Some of the classes down in, I came from Elizabetown, Kentucky, some of the schools down there had a CNA course, and I would come in and I would help them with their, whatever they were doing. It didn't matter. I was there to help. But see, that's where we can give teachers maybe a break, and we can do some of those, listen to a student getting a blood pressure, or getting a pulse, getting respirations. We can do those things, we can help out. We have eCyberMission as well. It's a free web-based, I'm sorry, science, math, and technology competition for students. Again, free, doesn't cost the school anything, okay? These are things that we offer that nobody knows about. Because for some reason, the recruiters are, I don't know, too scared, too busy, I know they're busy, to get out to the schools and to talk to the administrators and say, hey, we have these things available. It's kind of why I'm here tonight. Try to get it right at the top, but it turns way down. More information, we can contact the eCyberMission Ambassador, Ms. Sharon Wagner, and she's actually in Columbus. That's where our battalion is at. Okay, we have our Army Reserve Scholar-Athlete Award. Again, totally free to the school. We bring out nomination forms, and the school nominates who they want. It's all it takes. Doesn't cost the school anything. We can do it at senior night, we do a presentation, they get a medal, it's really nice, certificate, and it's just to honor, like your plaques, those kids that are excelling in sports and in school, okay? All right, Army Reserve, okay. Now we're going to talk a little bit about the benefits if the kids do decide to join. Army Reserve benefits. You only work one week in the month, two weeks during the summer. Everybody knows that, right? Nobody knows that. For some reason, they don't know the difference in the Army and Army Reserves. Basic pay, a little over $200 a month as soon as you come in. And you know your high school juniors and your high school seniors can join the Army Reserves, be getting paid while they're going to high school. Then, when they, and they do basic training between their junior and senior year, and they do AIT after their senior year during the summer, so they don't lose any time. They can still start college in August or September, whenever college starts, that next year. Pay training, over $1,500 a month while they're in basic training in AIT. And dependent if they have college credits already, they could possibly get promoted before they even leave, and that's where those AP plus courses come in. They've got college credits already, we can get them promoted, they're making more money right off the bat. Up to $30,000 in bonuses or student loan repayment. Now, the student loan repayment doesn't really affect the kids as much as the bonuses if they're right out of high school, because they don't have student loans yet. But, nice thing about that program, it does work for future student loans as well. Free housing, food, and uniforms while in training. School benefits, that's what everybody's talking about. Up to $30,000 in bonuses and student loan repayment, I don't know why that's on there twice. Tuition assistance, $4,000 per year. That's paid directly to the school, that's free money, it doesn't come out of the person's paycheck, nothing. Free money for education every year. Now, you don't get that money and then spend it on school. So if you don't go to school, you don't get that money. But it's free money that the Army Reserve is giving. $356 a month Montgomery GI Bill, and then you have post-9/11 GI Bill benefits, which if you have the post-9/11 GI Bill, you actually get paid for housing as well. I mean, that's pretty nice for a kid right out of high school, getting an apartment paid for, probably on campus, depending on where he goes, and money in his pocket. Regular Army benefits, again, basic pay, $1,500 a month with E1 with no experience. Now, I know, we're all adults here, nobody thinks $1,500 a month is a lot of money, right? But if you're talking $1,500 a month and you don't have to pay housing, you don't have to pay rent, you don't have to pay utilities, you don't have to buy food because they feed you three meals a day, every day of the week, to include holidays, boy, they got some good meals on holidays. Free. That $1,500 is money in your pocket. If you want to make bills, which a lot of people do, they go out and buy a nice car, right? Or they go and get that nice cellphone with the $300 a month. Who needs that kind of cellphone? Anyways, the bills that you make is the money coming out of it. Otherwise, that's money in your pocket. Pay training and moving expenses, I'm getting ready to, I've actually just moved up here to Cincinnati from Kentucky, and the Army's getting ready to move all my stuff up here. They send movers out to my house, they pack the entire house, they move it up here, and they unpack the entire house into where I moved into now. Free charge. Can't beat it. Free housing and meals for single soldiers, we talked about that. Now, married soldiers like myself, we don't get the free housing, we just get an allocated amount of funds for housing. And food. Uniforms provided, yearly uniform allowance. I get, I think it's $300 and some dollars every year, just so I can buy new uniforms because, you know, they wear out, or they get tears. Free healthcare for soldiers and their families. Very important if you're having a baby. Anybody had a baby recently? Cost you a pretty penny to have that.
Too bad.
Exactly. Absolutely free in the United States Army. 100% covered. Lord forbid you have to have a C-section or there's any incidents where the baby has to stay in the hospital more than a couple of days, because then you're really looking at some bills. Totally covered. Free gyms and weight rooms, Fort Knox by itself, and Fort Knox has dwindled quite a bit. Three full-service gyms, two pools, right there on Fort Knox, one indoor, one outdoor. All free. To you and your families. Organized team sports, yeah, I mean, we play the intramural stuff, you know, it's funny. Most people get hurt doing it, so we're trying to stay away from it. Tuition assistance, it's actually $4,500 a year now. And post-9/11 GI Bill benefits again. Okay, we skipped through a bunch of stuff there and my contact information at the end, but I'm going to leave this with Dan. He's actually got it already in his email somewhere tucked away.
Sure.
And I'm going to leave the CD with Ms. Amy. Any questions from anyone? On anything?
I would just like to point out that one of the intangibles that you haven't mentioned is just the fact that the Army's represented in our schools. It's part of the reason we can sit here and have board meetings and the big, long, historical look at things. And I certainly appreciate your service to our country, and it's great to let the community know, and when we talked right before, I mentioned that our meetings are televised, so hopefully a lot of folks out in the community, this just might be the thing to help them learn. I know at our graduations, we always recognize our students that are entering the military and there's generally a standing ovation for them, and it's very much appreciated. But that's one of the bigger parts of having you access to our student body is the fact that they might start thinking about what exactly the military does for our nation. So appreciate you being here.
Sergeant and Captain, I think you'll find this district most receptive to whatever you want to do, and I encourage you to go over to the scoreboard over at Colrain High School and look at the placard next to our new message board, dedicated to certain infantry division from World War II, connections with, and also to the all veterans of the United States Military. So if you drive tomorrow when you're running around at lunchtime, stop by there and check out that sign and the tribute to the military. But we do appreciate what you've done, and you're the perfect recruiter. I'm telling you, I'm about ready to reenlist.
Hey, we got jobs. We got jobs. What do you do with old guys, though?
Well, you might be overqualified. We call it too much life experience. Depends how many years you're in.
I couldn't pacifist.
That does, you have to pacifist.
Well, great. We really appreciate you taking the time to be here, and please, as time goes on, let the board know if there's anything we can do to help your cause.
Awesome, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next item is community communications. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or comment specific to something that was discussed this evening?
First of all, in reference to when they're redesigning the job descriptions, one, obviously as a pet peeve of mine, is the maintenance and custodian. When we build these new buildings, if we don't start the standards of how they're being taken care of mainly on the custodian level, I've seen, and that's not saying I was the best, but I worked for Mr. Bowling, and he said I was the best in my review. I'm a floor person, and the person that trained me is sitting back there. I think what we need to do, and I really, this is what we need to look at, we need to have a person whose total job and total focus is on the custodian part of the duties. Now, Bob is phenomenal. He's a nice guy. When I worked, he was, he's a great maintenance person, and he has a good vision for custodian. I don't care which one that he does, but I think they need to have a person, that's what I do at BAYTON, I totally focus on that part. They know I can't turn, you know, I thought a Phillips head was a guy I used to smack upside the head. I didn't, I didn't know it was Phillips head, but now I found out it was a tool, so, but that ain't my job. My job is custodian and security there. I think that when we do those job descriptions, they have to totally focus on the things that only custodians would look at, and the floors and rest and cleaning, cleaning and stuff like that. So I'm hoping they break those two groups up and have a supervisor that totally focus on that and the other. Now, Bob could be over those two, I don't care how that happens, but you definitely have to do that. Our buildings, when we build the very new buildings, they won't look brand new in less than 10 years. They'll look disgusting, okay? The other one is on another note, is in reference to our diversity. I learned a new word, inclusion is probably, and I've talked to Mr. Bowling about this, and I'm going to talk to you. You asked me to be on the committee, and I'm okay with that. But it was, it's very important that one of the things that came out in that meeting, I was there, missed you, Mr. Ungrander, you were Boy Scout or Ty Notz or whatever, but it was important that one of the things that came out is inclusion. Inclusion didn't just mean involving all the students, whether they be black or white or green or yellow, then inclusion meant, I'm telling you as a minority, because I happen to be, wow, I'm the best minority in the building right now, because I'm the only minority in the building. And the reason I'm saying this is this, you have to see a reflection of yourself. And I know we go in this tug of war about minority teachers and they don't want to, we can't harm minority teachers because we don't pay enough and everything. And I'm kind of asking you guys not, kind of not to say that anymore. I'm going to tell you, this is what I heard from a minority educator, and I'm going to tell you, after they bounce that off and I'm going to reflect this to you, and I'm going to ask you, let's don't say that we can't get minority teachers because we can't pay enough. Because then what you're saying to this particular minority teacher and to a person like myself who's taking job cuts to coach, I have a passion to coach. He coaches, he coaches for free. I don't coach for free right now, but I'm going to tell you right now, I took a pay cut because of my passion to coach. Same with teachers. If you're saying that we can't harm minority teachers because we don't pay enough, then you're saying that white teachers have more of a passion for education than we do, and that's disrespectful. So I'm asking you nicely and respectfully, don't say that anymore. Let's do our best just to bring them in, but please don't say that anymore because it's offensive to people out in the community, especially those who are teachers in other school districts. I think, and this young lady who was talking about indirectly or directly diversity, it's very important that everybody sees a reflection of their self in anything they want to do. Pam is here because she's seen reflections of other ladies being on the school board. We all, you guys, and as white males, you get to see a reflection of yourself in a lot of things. So it's very important that we see, and that would draw more people into those meetings, educational meetings, it would draw more people into the helping with the diversity program. But when we don't see a reflection of yourself, then to these kids and to these parents, it's you against us. I'm telling you right now, you can twist and turn it, you can do all the fancy things you want to do, but as long as they keep seeing it's them against us, it's not going to change. You're going to have to put a reflection of everybody in our school district. They need to see theirselves as part of everything, whether they be teachers, custodians, maintenance, security, whatever. They need to see it on the school board, not throwing a plug, but I'm just saying, we need to see a reflection of ourselves if you want everybody to be included in this big picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Dexter. Is there anyone else that has any comments or questions about anything that's been discussed this evening? I've seen no one, we'll move on to the next item, which is board member comments. Mr. Heater.
Well, first of all, Dexter, I did get a robo-call from you today, sir.
Oh.
Wish you well, Dexter, and Ryan, and Bev, and Jim, and Dan, and I guess two of the board candidates aren't here, but it's been spirited, friendly competition. Wish you all well, and I'm glad that there was, I didn't see any mud slung at all in this. Second thing is, on Tuesday, not only do we have the important school board race, but we have the bigger issue as far as the entire community that is going to affect the district for many, many years, and that's the levy. There's no way this board would have been unified, five to nothing, and all of us writing There's no way this board would have been unified, five to nothing, and all of us writing letters and doing what we did. This is the best deal, I mean, it doesn't get any better. I mean, money is so cheap right now, we can build these three schools, interest rates are so low, this is never gonna happen again. We've got our message out, I mean, Todd, you've done a wonderful job with communicating to various sections of our community. I just hope that everybody gets out and force somebody you know, I know there's, what, 30 people in here, but somebody who wasn't gonna vote, get them and force them, hogtie them if you have to, and get them to the precincts on Tuesday, and let's make this thing happen. And that's it.
Thank you. Chris, Mr. Detschel?
Yeah, I just wanna echo what Chris said about the levy. I mean, this is a very important time in our district, we need to get this passed. And like Todd said, we're gonna have to, if we don't get this passed, we gotta come up with $6 million in cuts. Or is that gonna be? I don't know. And then I would just like to say that myself and Pam and Dan, Saturday night, we presented trophies over at the Colrain Band Competition.
And Jack.
And Jack was there, excuse me. And in the pouring down rain, but it was a packed house, and there was a ton of people there. Just wanted to say I enjoyed that. And then, we did have four of our cross-country runners qualify for the regional meet on Saturday up at Troy. We had two girls and two boys, the girls run at 12:30, and the boys are at 3:00. If anybody would like to come, it's up in Troy, Ohio. That's it.
Thank you. Jim, Michael, did you have any comments?
I'll give my best shot here. Part of this comes from campaigning for the levy over the weekend, when it started to get a little cold and a little wet, but I was out knocking on doors off of Dry Ridge Road, and it went pretty well. Thought we got a pretty good reception from the people I was able to talk to in some of the neighborhoods there that would vote at St. John, and really looking forward to a hopefully successful effort on Tuesday, and wish all the candidates in seeking election or reelection well as well on the election.
Thank you. Michael, Pam, do you have any comments?
A couple, most of it has been said. Chris, I agree with you, this is the best time. The fact that five of us came together and unanimously to put up this levy, this is what's best for the entire community. Whether you have kids in the schools, whether you've never had kids in the school, whether you're homeowners, it's finally, we're gonna see an increase in our property values. When new schools are built, it will bring new families into this area, and that's what we need, that's what we want. And so, I encourage everyone, not only to vote for the levy, but when you see your friends or your neighbors, see if they went and voted. You know, we have, well, a little over seven days now, but one person can make a difference. You've got to communicate with people, and if they have a question and you're not sure how to answer it, do not hesitate to call Todd, call somebody here at Central Office, call one of the board members. We are trying to be as open and as transparent as possible for this levy. This is huge for our entire district. I did also wanna thank everybody that's worked on the levy, it was great. Our houses aren't real close together, and it was great to come home after being all wet Saturday night from the band competition, to open my front door, and I got my door dropped too. So, it's great to know everybody was out there, and they were working hard, we're all working together, and that's what's so important. So I wanna wish all the athletes who are getting to postseason here from both schools, good luck, and be up cheering in Troy, and when we're successful, then this next board meeting is gonna be exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. I sent you a, Lori, I sent you a picture last week of your effect of your principalship internationally. You've done a great job with our exchange student, and she's ready to pursue the last part of her master's degree in English as a second language teacher. She lives in Germany, and I'm glad that you were able to see that picture, and we're so proud of Pat, and I'd like to thank the district for allowing her three months to teach here, and she was at Ann Weigle, and that's one of the things we can do, and with specific to the reading, I think you have Pat here as a, to help kids learn how to read, and this is a girl that grew up in Germany, and she has a better mastery of the English language than probably I do, and so there's always room for volunteers to help our kids learn to read and write.
She's a great asset to be doing.
Yeah, she's really something else, and she has really been bugging me lately to talk to her, and the last time she did that, she was coming over, so if she's coming back again, I'll make sure that she comes to see you. The new school buildings that we're talking about, if you look around this room, I'm thinking that Ryan back there is probably the youngest one, and the rest of us, we need to get some, I'm 53-years-old, we need to get some 20 and 30-year-olds settling in this district with their kids and families, rather than having them move on out of the district. Now, Michael, I know your kids are young, but, yeah, you're younger than, I don't know who's older or younger, I'm not the youngest. We do need to get some young people wanting to stay in the district, and, you know, I think that Detschel's, your daughter's.
She moved back.
Bought a house here in the district.
Do I get to mention my grandson?
I didn't know you had a grandson, Pam.
And he'd be attending these schools.
No, but my point is, we need to get some young people.
Absolutely.
Moving back into the district, and because 10 years from now, we're all gonna be 10 years older, and our demographics have changed, not unlike a lot of the rest of Hamilton County. So, as far as an infrastructure item, whether it's the roads, or the bridges, or the school buildings, or the firehouses, it's just something that this board needs to take responsibility for. You know, 10 years from now, I don't think any of us are gonna be sitting on this board, it won't be me for sure, but we just need to get that update going for our district. And with that, we'll move on to the next item.
Dan, sorry, on the forecast, the info-action, the action part didn't work. The board needs to take action on the forecast in the month of October.
Okay, so should I back up to that, or?
It's not on there, I can do it on paper, and it'll be in the official minutes.
Okay, so we did discuss that as an earlier item, and you presented it, and we talked about it, and so you need a vote on?
Whether to accept the forecast and the notes that were attached to the EST.
Okay, so you wanna ask for a recommended motion and?
Treasurer and superintendent recommend that the board accept the five-year forecast and notes as listed in the EST.
So moved.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call a vote, and there'll be an oral vote.
Mrs. Detschel?
Aye.
Mr. Harlow?
Aye.
Mr. Heater?
Aye.
Mr. Detschel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.